Give me a water, please.
Yolanda, are you ready? Is it airing?
Yes, we're on.
Okay. Today is June 8th, 2022, 7:30 PM. The special meeting of the West Miami City Commission calls me into order. Can I have the rule call, please, Madam Manager?
Of course. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan M. Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano L. Suarez.
Yes.
City Manager Aguilar is here, City Attorney Jose Villalobos is here, and the City Clerk is on vacation and excused this evening.
All right. Can I get everyone to rise with pleasurable leashes?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 3, public comments. Anyone for public comments?
Anyone for public comments? No one has registered as of this time. Speaker cards are on the rail as customary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item?
Number 4, special agenda items. Item 4A, discussion regarding waiver of bid requirement as defined by the City of West Miami Code of Ordinances, Section 2-74, waiver of bids of the City of West Miami for the purchase of a new jitney bus for the City of West Miami Community Center at an estimated cost of $50,000, requiring a forfeit vote of the Mayor and City Commission. Mayor Diaz-Padrón.
So on this item, I'm sure as we're all aware that the bus that the seniors have been using is a little rundown. It breaks down, has air conditioning problems, et cetera, and they've been asking for this for quite some time. So in talking with Mr. Penna and the manager, there really, there's a few reasons why we have to waive the bid requirements for this. And one of them is time, because when the summer, and the second of them is because frankly, the bids just aren't going to come in on a single unit for a transit van. So what you have in front of you, I guess, Mr., why don't you go to the mic? What do we have in front of us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Basically, at the last meeting that we held with the manager, I was asked to go to different dealerships to see what they had available. As you know, I researched this a little bit further back, I believe it was in April, through the Florida Sheriff's Bid. And the problem that I ran into there, number one, there's no stock. Number two, the bid is from 2020, so they're waiting on the new bid to come out in late October. And Ford won't be taking orders on any new vehicles until sometime in January. That puts your delivery date sometime mid-June of next year. However, I was at, we have a second jitney bus that's had a exhaust problem for over nine months now, and Ford has still not made the replacement part for it. So it's at the same dealership where I went. This dealer just happened to have, after speaking to the sales manager there, he has a jitney transit van that arrives tomorrow, but it's a canceled order. So if we're interested, he'll show it to us tomorrow when it arrives, and from there, we can go ahead and purchase it at that point. It's a brand-new transit bus, like the one we were going to spec out. The cost that he has right now on that, just sticker price, is $53,900. Our cap was $50,000, but I believe we can negotiate from there down with the dealership.
Right, and remember, we're, this, every, I think every resolution on this agenda has to do with the American Rescue Plan money coming down from the federal government. It's allocating that money, so this $50,000 would be an allocation from that fund, from the federal government funds. Anything above can be, if, let's say, the van can't be negotiated down and it's $53,000, we can take $3,000 from the Community Center Fund or some other general fund to make up that difference, but still the grand majority we paid for by this federal money entirely. Now, I've, in talking with the manager right now, I know we all try to make our residents happy, and I, she mentioned to me there were some concerns on which van, which vehicle would be right. I know, talking to Mr. Penna and talking to Evelyn and talking to the manager, they, the bus, the jitney, the transit, this Ford Transit seems to be the best option. But I do, I do think that we need to make one last round with the seniors there to make sure that we get the best thing everywhere to put $50,000 and that at least the majority, majority are happy. We know this is going to fit our program. We know this is a big upgrade, but we have to at least try to make everyone happy as much as possible. So I would suggest that we go ahead and allocate that money from this, from this spot, since we're allocating pretty much all the funds today that we allocated, and then hopefully, and will, I guess, communicate individually with the manager, and I think the manager can either make that call in consultation with us after, hopefully before next meeting, so that we can take advantage of that.
Yes, hopefully for next meeting. What I was going to suggest is that, I don't know if they'll allow you to bring the jitney here, or I could go with you tomorrow at some point and...
We'll take it for a test drive.
Exactly, and take it for a test drive.
It seems, it seems to be the hiccup with some of the, some of the, the...
The features.
Some of the seniors at the center seems to be around the walker and the canes.
Exactly.
Which is something that I personally heard door-to-door, so I, it's not, it's not new. You know, I don't know what can be done, if anything, to alleviate some of that problem. I understand some of the, some of the arguments that it's not part of the program and the active senior, I totally get that, but you know, there is, there is a, there's a spectrum of activity with people who have walkers and canes, and the more we can include them, especially with the limited number of people who actually use the van and the amount of space that we have in there, I would like to take advantage of anything we can do to...
Make it attractive for them.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Was any, anybody want to jump in here on this?
Yeah, I have a question. How many seats is this jitney?
Fifteen.
Fifty?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
One five.
And compare with the jitney we have been using, how many seats?
The other jitney is a 22-passenger.
This one we have been using is 22?
That's correct.
And the new one, this proposal is 15?
Yes.
So it's smaller?
We've rented one identical to this, when the other one was broken for about two, three months, and they seem to enjoy that one when we had that one.
It's more comfortable now?
Yeah.
Now, and what about the consumption? This is a new engine, consume less gasoline?
It's the average rating that it has right now. It's a six-cylinder, so it should be good on gas. Has all the modern technology that it comes with. Trying to see the rating.
Most importantly, it won't break down, and it's got air conditioning.
It's a B-, B- minus in greenhouse gas, so it's not a bad...
They always explain you, so it's a new engine, more economic?
Correct.
What's the warranty on that one?
I believe it's here somewhere, I read it.
Five-year, well, three years, 36,000 miles, bumper to bumper.
Five-year, 60 for the roadside assistance, five-year, 60 for the powertrain, and three-year, 36,000, bumper to bump.
Now, I know this is, you haven't researched this, so just off the top of your head, is there anything that we can do to, that can be retrofitted, that can alleviate some of those?
Well, we need to see the, what they ordered.
Okay.
And once it arrives, if it has the pull-out step and stuff like that, we don't know until it arrives.
Right, and let's say it doesn't. Let's say it doesn't have the pull-out step.
We could always take it somewhere to have it fitted for that.
And then in terms of, in terms of walkers and canes, is there anything that can be do to alleviate some of that?
Well, that platform that comes out is big enough for them to stand down and be able to manipulate their walker and cane into the van.
All right, so I guess it's a wait-and-see until tomorrow on that, right?
Yes.
Mr. Penna, my answer. I ask you a question, and I'm waiting for the answer.
On the gas, sir?
What I mean is, if this, because it's 19 to 22, it's four less seats, and this is smaller.
It's smaller, but, but it's, it's, has a high roof, so it's not, it's not a minivan, so it's a, it's a nice, comfortable van. We've used it in the past, like I said, we rented one for about two, three months, and they were...
And yeah, we have the experience, and the consumption is more or less the same?
It would be the same as what we spend now, probably less. The old diesel bus consumes a lot more now because it's much older.
All right, and another question, Mayor. You're talking about the $3,000, we need more money, we have to take for the general fund of the senior centers.
Right.
Now, what does it mean, that means that we only, we only can use $50,000 from the American Rescue Act?
No, we could, we could up it. You know, we, we can't...
What I mean is, it's a top, it's a $50,000?
We would be setting a cap here. We could technically, and it might be, I mean, Ivan, if you can move back your head a second, just look at the manager. It might be, considering now that what we're talking about in terms of some, well, we already know that the price is going to come in higher than 50 likely, just a little bit. And we might have to do some retrofitting.
Retrofitting.
It might be smart to up it a little, $5,000 to 55. I know you've got to move something around there. You've got to move $5,000 from somewhere else, but...
Right, and all the dealer fees and everything else?
Right.
I say, I say we should up it to about 57.5 to 60.
Okay.
Sixty, a cap of $60,000.
It's going to cost $60,000. So...
I go back to my question.
Yeah.
When the number here is $50,000 for estimated value, is that for the American Rescue Act program? And now at 53,954, 55, is a cap in the American Rescue, or just we can...
No, this is us. So I would suggest, on your point, to your point, I would suggest that we actually do a cap of $60,000 to give, to give room, so that we don't have to take money from the general fund.
My question is that, because the $50,000, is it an obligation to use that cap?
No, no, it's us. It's us, it's us.
You set the cap.
Because we need it, because it's a vehicle we, we think is a more suitable. $5,000 is not a big thing in one of these investments.
Correct, correct. And if, and like the mayor said, if we need to retrofit it, I'm sure there's going to be a charge for that, too.
So let's, let's increase the cap on this to 60 as part of this resolution. I know that means that you've got to take 10 from one or the other. I don't know, are we setting the entirety here?
From the, from the total amount, from the, remember that we're getting $4,390,000.
I don't think there's any other here that have a set amount, right?
No, no.
Okay, so we'll be fine there, we don't have to adjust anything else.
We're fine, as long as we...
Just for the Commissioner's question, it's 24 miles per gallon in the city, 27 highway.
That's pretty good, go ahead.
Is this an itemized list of the...
No, that's, that's the sheriff's bid. The itemized invoice is the one you have in front.
This one.
The rest would be what we have available on the sheriff's bid, which is going to run, the new bid should run somewhere in $45,000, $50,000 range.
Right, and the issue, one of the issues with the sheriff's bid, we talked about, is it opens up, and I believe in October.
October.
And then after that, it would take between six to nine months to get the vehicle.
Correct.
So it's, it's a problem, especially considering the seniors are more vulnerable to the heat, and let me tell you, I'm in my car, and I have the air conditioner at full blast, and I'm, and I'm still a little, I still get a little hot.
I asked too, because I don't see anything for diesel here. It's showing a V6 engine at the bottom, so our jitney is going to be a diesel, correct?
No, no.
No. Transit is gasoline. Gasoline, okay.
Our current bus is diesel.
Okay.
The transit would be a normal...
A gasoline, a flex fuel.
Right.
You could put the lower grade, or you could put the...
Okay, because I think that's what Commissioner Suarez was asking about, the fuel efficiency going to a smaller...
Yeah, well, the mileage is 24 to 27, so it's a lot better than what we get on the jitney now.
So if everyone is on the same page...
May I read the resolution, item B?
Yeah, let me explain it first. It should be waiving competitive bidding requirements and then allocating $60,000, an amendment of $60,000 to the purchase of the jitney bus. And again, we're going to go back to the seniors to make sure that we're squared away there, to make sure that they're happy.
Yeah, we're better, and then we don't have to go to the community center and the general fund. If we have the American Act, the Rescue Act, if we can use the money from that.
Yes.
If we decide to buy, just do it right, the things right.
So read the res, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Penna, what are we doing with the old jitney?
We will keep one as a spare. Once we get the one that's at the dealer back, we'll put that one up for auction. It's a newer one, so we'll always have one spare.
So we're going to keep the diesel?
They're both diesel, the ones at the dealer and the one that we have here.
So we're going to auction the newer one?
Yes, because it's a bigger bus with the handicap lift and everything else that we don't use on a regular basis.
We're going to keep the other one, because we also have the pickup of the children at the school, and we take them to the after-school care program.
That gets used for that, yeah.
There's no one is going to do in the community center and also the school?
No.
No.
We would use the old one.
The old one is going to pick up the elementary and Silvania.
Correct.
So, Madam Manager, read the resolution, and then I would need a motion in favor of the amended resolution to include a $60,000 allocation.
Yes, sir. Item 4B, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, waiving competitive bidding pursuant to Section 2-74, City of West Miami Code of Ordinances for the purchase of a jitney bus to be assigned to the City of West Miami Community Center with an estimated value of $60,000 to include the correction just made. Such costs shall be funded by the American Rescue Act program, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
I need a motion on the amended resolution?
Make a motion.
A motion, a motion in a second.
Second. All in favor, please, vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed have the same right. Thank you. The next item, Mr. Mayor, is Item C on the Agenda, Report by the Office of the City Manager Regarding the American Rescue Act Projects Funded by Defining a More Definitive List of Eligible Projects and Requesting an Amendment to Resolution 21, 2021-65, City Manager.
Go ahead.
Attached to your packet, one of the first, there's a legend for the request for the use of the American Rescue Act. As we get closer to knowing what our infrastructure needs are, what our stormwater pumps are going to cost, we're going to come to you from time to time and ask you to amend these. And this is true also for the potable water improvements. As we get closer and as we have our engineer price out all these, all these supplies and parts and infrastructure improvements, we're going to come to you and give you more specific information on how we propose that you authorize us to spend the money from the American Rescue Act. In this case, as part of the, as part of the ongoing negotiation, and I'm not going to go into any detail with collective bargaining, we come to you to increase the premium pay for law enforcement for a total of $100,000 versus $27,000, Chief, I believe, that was paid out already in round one to our law enforcement officers. And so this premium pay is a lump sum of $1,000, which was already paid out, another $1,000, which is due September of 2022, and $1,500 due to the law enforcement officers that would be paid to them if approved on December 1st, 2022 in the amount of $1,500. We would need to pay benefits, we pay benefits on all these, on these allocations. So it would be a total of $100,000. The next item would be the replacement of stormwater pumps, $550,000. The next item would be the purchase of the jitney bus, which we had estimated at $50,000. We have now changed that to $60,000 based on commission approval. And the allocation of a total of $3,690,984 for the improvements to Phase 2, which would be the west side of the city, of the City of West Miami Potable Water Service Lines to include design, engineering, permitting, purchase of new water meters for 550 properties on the west side of the city as defined by the city's building official and city engineer. That would be our recommendation.
Right, and we all know stormwater pumps are not sexy, but when the water comes down, everybody wants to be in the flood.
Exactly.
This year, if, if we were to allocate the $3,690,984 to the potable water project, which is our signature project at this point, and including Maria Vida Salazar's allocation from the federal government, $3 million, and the state appropriation that just came in last week for $2 million, that would be a total this year for potable water improvements of $8,690,984. That's, that's incredible, in one year for a project.
The money from the Salazar is secure?
The money from Salazar is, have they reached out to you yet, Madam Manager? I know I spoke to them.
No, I actually reached out to Hayed, and I left her a message, but I have not heard back.
But yeah, so that money is signed, sealed, Biden, President Biden already signed it. That money's, that money's secure. So $3 million there, we all know, Governor Santos signed the $2 million appropriation in the budget last week. And of course, this money is already in hand from the American Rescue Plan. So the, you know, 8.6 or 8.7 million dollars almost to this project, which we know would otherwise burden residents for a long time, like our, like our sewer conversion project did.
Exactly, and this doesn't include Phase 1 or Phase 1B, which is already underway, and...
Right, which, which was another...
Yes.
What? A lot of money.
Yeah, that was 350 plus, that was another million dollars of state money. We actually leveraged...
No, no taxpayer, no property taxpayer money, go ahead.
Question, Madam Manager, the total amount of money from the American Rescue Plan, how much was that?
4.3, $4,390,000.
And from the state?
The state is going to be, I haven't received written confirmation, but the governor approved $2 million.
And...
And there's another $3 million. That's a separate $3 million from the federal government.
A federal pot.
That is another, so it's another...
That's an earmark for $3 million.
Yes, sir.
From a federal pot that we still don't know if we're going to get?
No, no, we're, no, that one's already signed.
So, so then that should be enough money to complete Phase 2?
Very close to. Our city engineer advises that that would take us maybe anywhere from 75% to 80% of the, of the, of the project.
That's taking into consideration buying the new stormwater pumps?
Yes.
Right, this is, yeah.
How many, how many pumps are we buying?
Mr. Pennon? Six pumps.
Six pumps. And...
And those are very expensive pumps.
And, and with the old ones, what are we going to do with the old ones?
Sell it, no?
We will put on my surplus property for sale.
We're now going to repair them and have them as spares?
No, they're, it's a completely different design. That manufacturer that we have from those pumps is no longer in business. So the new ones that we would get will be the most modern one that they have today from one of our local vendors, and those will be sold off, and the actual framework for the pump station will be changed to facilitate those pumps.
How much can we get for those? I mean, just curious.
I would imagine anywhere around 25 to 30 per pump.
Per pump, and we're doing six?
Yeah.
That's not a bad, that's not a bad change back to the general fund.
Yeah, what would they do? They would just use them parts, just...
No, they, usually they get shipped down South, South America. Those are very good pumps, they're...
Are we going to be able to replace the sewer pumps?
We've done all the sewer pumps at this point.
Okay, so the sewer pumps have been replaced?
Yes, they're all new.
Okay, all right. Like the one we have near the park on 64th and the one that's on that little park, triangular park on Silvania and 11th, right?
We've done all those stations.
That's, they've all been done, right?
Yes.
So again, we're, we're, we're trying to, go ahead.
Remember, we are now almost, almost reaching the half of the problem of the potable water.
Well, I think we're reaching a little more, right?
With all this money, we would be probably at 80%, if not better.
Remember that we're planning in the beginning, replace the lines from the whole city. And we start with the most critical area, that EY Link make the, the, the study for the east part of the city. And I think we are about a half of the city in the east, but we have the west of the city we didn't touch yet.
Correct.
And potable water, replace the lines and that. So we can, we have to keep thinking that, that the potable water solution we have been done is not yet, in my calculus, is not yet 50%. It's less than that.
Correct.
Because originally, you know, originally, years ago, about seven or eight, 10 years, when they make a plan, the total cost in that time was 17 millions.
Right.
The whole city. Now, we have been spending about, with this money, about eight millions or nine millions or...
We're about what, 10, 10.5 in?
We're, we should be at about 10.5.
We have to focus that, we still have to do the west part of the city.
Yeah, so we'll continue to go after state money, continue to go after federal money, continue to have the grants.
We have to keep looking for money for the west part of the city.
I would suggest, though, coming into next session, because I know the governor just signed this, this budget, but session comes fast, and by, in a couple of months, by the fall, they already start putting out committee schedules, and we have started getting appropriations in line. So I would suggest that we actually go, I know we've been hitting single-digit appropriations on the potable water. I would suggest this year that we actually put multiple operations on the table, as long as they're in different committees. So appropriation for potable water, we ask for our $1 million, $2 million, like we usually do, and we also go after police funding for the station, and we also go after, basically, we go after money and that, as long as they're in separate committees, so the committee chairs don't see West Miami twice.
Right.
So I would suggest that going into next session, we'll have a conversation about that when legislative priorities comes. In regards to American Rescue Plan, if everyone is good with this framework, this framework, because again, managers are going to come back multiple times probably to adjust the actual levels as things get priced out. But if everyone's good with this framework on how to spend the money, then we can move on to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item, Agenda, Item D is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending Resolution 2021-65, approved by the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami on November 17th, 2021, establishing the estimated cost for the projects to be funded from the American Rescue Act program, authorizing the Office of the City Manager to allocate funds to premium pay for law enforcement, replacement of the city's stormwater pumps as part of the infrastructure upgrades, purchase of the jitney bus for the city's community center to be used for... to be used for transport, transporting seniors to our program, replace the bus that has been in use for several years and is no longer a dependable method of transportation for seniors, setting an allocation for the continued improvement to the city's potable water improvements to include design, engineering services, permit and permitting, purchase of water meters to serve five hundred and fifty properties in the City of West Miami as defined by the city engineers, known as Phase Two of the Potable Water System Project. Providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second, call the roll.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Just a little parenthesis. The money that we're using for the, is part of the agreement with the police department, right?
It, it's part of the, what's being negotiated.
Negotiation, okay, yes.
Commissioner Candida Blanca and Mayor Diaz Padron?
Yes.
All voted in favor, it's a five-o unanimous vote.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion? Any adjournments?
Thank you. That was a record.